I can't hear you guys, you're unmoved.
We're sent out prior to the meeting, and I hope the commissioners have had a chance to look them over. Are there any comments or changes required? And so do we need a motion to approve? We just accept them, don't we?
A motion to approve.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October sixteenth.
Second.
Okay, our motion is the movement seconded to approve the minutes of our October sixteenth meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, so those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So we have an announced decision on that, okay. And thank you for catching that. I went right over the top of it. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to developable development code fee. Public hearing presentation. For the record, we've had one more member join. Greg.
All right, so. This presentation will be covering the fee study that the city recently conducted. Reviewing the proposed development fee schedule and next steps and public comment. So first, why are we updating our fees? There are several reasons. One, the city is facing fiscal constraints. Out of date fees result in lost revenue opportunities. And we are bringing a new permit system online, which presents a great opportunity to fix our processes and our fees and get everything up to date. Particularly the fiscal constraints, the city is concerned that the general fund is subsidizing which. Primary review, which should be covered by these paid by applicants. There are five primary types of fees the city charges, including flat fees, valuation based fees, percentage based fees, hourly fees, and actual cost. All these types of five types are used for different types of things. For instance, flat fees are great for simple applications that don't require a lot of review. They're easy to understand. Valuation based fees are more appropriate for projects that are larger and have variable costs and review times. Percentage based fees are typically used for surcharges like the tech fee. And then hourly and actual cost aim to recover actual, you know, actual costs the city either from outside consultant or staff reviewing. Many of our fees are quite out of date. Some of it not dated since updated since the nineties, such as our temporary signs and our business license fees and demolition permits. Some tasks that the department does are free or low cost when there should be a appropriate fee charged. So as part of our fee study, we reviewed all of our current fees. We also reviewed fire fees and other municipal fees. We'll be covering those focused on development fees. We compared what we have with that of Bothell Everett Linwood, Molin Terrace, Muckel T U and Somish County. And we found that there is many differences in how cities levy fees. So we tried to get the most apples to apples comparison, but it's difficult because sometimes you know, one city would contribute a flat fee for something or there's no city will charge an hourly based fee. And it's really hard to compare perfectly, but with the best we could. Here's how much revenue we collected in two thousand and twenty four, nearly three hundred thousand dollars based on eight hundred and sixty one permits issued. And we'll be at the end of the presentation going over how much revenue the city could be raising with the new fees. About forty one percent of all the revenue we take in from fees is paid out to a third party, Safebuilt. Safebuilt provides building official planner view and inspection services for the department. All right, so we're going to cover four primary types of fees, general fees that apply to all all types of locations, building permit fees, engineering fees, and land use fees or planning fees. So here is our proposed development fee schedule. We had three overarching goals. One, we want to make them make the fees simple and predictable so that easy to understand for contractors and homeowners. We wanted to strive for cost recovery so that the general fund isn't subsidizing the department where possible. But we also did balance that with being consistent with peers. We strive to find how much our peers charge and then find a median and hope and try to be somewhere in the median. Right, so first, our general development fees. Our hourly rate is proposed to go up to one hundred and seventy five dollars an hour from one hundred dollars an hour. And that's very similar to our peer average of one seventy three. Our tech fee is unchanged. And then we want to add a new fee, which is a credit card fee for those who want to pay online using credit cards or online or in person with credit cards. Hearing examiner and third party review will stay the same, their actual cost, except that we will now levy in ten percent administration fee to cover the staff time involved with handling the contract and communication and administrative tasks. No changes to additional planner view or additional inspections. We will start charging double the hourly rate for inspections on weekends and holidays since it will cost us more. For our during by our civil contract requires us to spend more on those times. We also want to double applicable fees for work done without a permit to discourage people from not pulling permits. And increase the from two hundred to three fifty application extensions. For our building permit fees for those that require plan review. These are more complex projects. They will remain valuation based, although we are updating our valuation table as you'll see in the following slides. We are updating our plan review fee from sixty five percent of the permit fee to seventy percent of the permit fee. So for instance, if you had a building permit that cost one hundred dollars and required planner view, you'd be would be seventy. And that's very close to our peer average, which was seventy two percent. All right, and then certificate of occupancy will also increase to one seventy five, one hundred. All right, so for our over the counter fees. These are fees for simple applications, like if you wanna install a new water heater, that's an over the counter fee. It means no review is required, you just you you apply for the permit, we give you the permit, and then we do an inspection once the work is complete. So the cost for that will increase from one thirty to one seventy five for re roofs. From fifty five to eighty seven fifty for fences. And then for mechanical permits and plumbing permits. It'll increase to one hundred and seventy five for the base fee. We'll also be adjusting it so that the base fee includes up to four fixtures. So previously, let's say you're remodeling your or adding a new bathroom and you had to install, you know, a sink, a shower. Whatever else you want, you know, each of those fixtures have cost you around twelve dollars. Now you get all your fixtures or you get up to four fixtures included in the base fee. So that should make it simple for most people because it'll be one fee for most projects people do. So here's some examples of what that would look like. Our current currently, if you want to install a new gas stove, it would cost forty two dollars. The peer average is one twenty eight and the proposed fees are one seventy five. A bathroom remodel currently would cost seventy, the peer average is one sixty nine, and the proposed fees are one seventy five. For re roofs. Again, one thirty currently, two oh six is the peer average, and the proposed fee is one seventy five. And for fence currently, it's fifty five, no peer average, because many cities don't charge for fence permits. Or if they do, we wouldn't have data really, proposed fee is eighty seven fifty. You notice all these fees are calculated in increments of one seventy five, which is our base hourly rate. So we assume it's gonna take about an hour of work total to do all the inspections and permitting for these things. So we charge an equivalent of one hours of work. Here's our current building valuation fee. So this applies if you, for instance, are doing, you need a building permit to add in addition to your home. What you would do is you would find how much that issue would cost. And then you would use this evaluation table to determine your permit fee. As you can see, we are lower than the peer average significantly from between a low of fifteen percent up to sixty seven percent depending on the permit. So we have proposed a new valuation table, which brings us more in line with the peer average. And it's now based on a instead of a complicated increment system, it's now based on a percentage. And you can see now we are in line, some of the tiers are a little bit below peer average, some are a little higher. But overall, it's it's very similar to what our peers are to charge. Here's some examples of what some permits would cost with the new valuation table. I'm not gonna go through all of them. It's gonna be much to look through them if you have any questions. Any questions? You can see they're all within five percent of what our peers are, mostly within five percent, ones within nine percent, but overall very close to what our peers are charged. All right, here's some more fees. Signs unchanged. We're mostly leaving signs unchanged because next year we're planning on doing an update to our sign regulations at which time we'll update our sign fees. We're also leaving simple tree removals. At we're not changing them that right now there is there's no charge for tree removal permits. We are adding a charge for protected tree removals because they involve significantly more work than regular tree. Protected tree would be, for instance, one in a critical area or NGPA or a, you know, wetland buffer. Those require an arborist report and we don't want to. Yes, Jeff.
Just a quick note about trees and signs. So those are such an involved issue in the city. And there's it's so much complications with that in terms of community support and what, you know, the tree canopy means to the city and same thing with signs and how it means to businesses. That's gonna be part of next year's work plan. So just giving you all the heads up that in two thousand and twenty six, the planning commission expect to us be talking a lot about tree permits and sign permits because that's going to be a much more involved conversation that we just wanna really be deliberate on and make sure that we're making these decisions with with what we feel is a sufficient and appropriate amount of public input and robust discussion.
Thank you.
And we're looking forward, I'm looking forward especially to the tree update. The city really prides itself on having a great lots of trees and nature everywhere in the city. But our tree regulations are surprisingly lax. It's very easy to chop down trees with, there's not a lot of restrictions. And so we wanna look at what is appropriate for the city and really meets our our goals and values. All right, I'm going, next up, the engineering fees. The structure is the same, but we are updating the percentages to be slightly higher to cover our our costs. Additionally, our right of way fees are increasing. We're changing the structure a bit to instead of a flat fee. The field increased based on how much, what percentage or how many feet of right of way are being impacted. So a large project is kind of a greater fee than a smaller project. Right now, it's just one flat fee for many types of right of way permits.
So is is there any footage allowed on that basic right of way or is it gonna be the, can you go back one slide? Is it going to be three fifty and then at a minimum eighty seven fifty? On top of that?
I believe so unless I don't, I didn't write down here for the, there may be a threshold, like you have to get over a hundred feet to additional feet. I will need clarify with our engineers, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that should be clarified. Do you get X number of feet for free?
I think they could know that, I think that's how it's supposed to be, but I didn't write it down, so I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And I had a question on one slide back of that.
Oh, sure.
And maybe it's one more. The A boards? Is it would that would qualifies or what constitutes an A board?
So an A board would be, well, the temporary signs will apply to any sort of sign that's temporary. It could be a banner, it could be like a real estate. A real estate sign, just anything that's not gonna be permanent. So, you know, not like a, you know, a wall sign on a business or a monument sign for shopping center. Those are the valuation based, the temporary ones, just anything that's, you know, not gonna last forever.
So on the real estate side of things, if somebody is a realtor is hope having an open house and they're gonna put up an A board, they'd be putting and that's for like two hours, they'd be spending twenty five dollars per A board?
Yeah, we also offer a an annual real estate sign, so a real estate or realtor can get the annual permit and it'll cover all open houses. You just need to have your. Yeah, so if you think you do a lot of work in the city, do that for a one time fee and it'll cover all the open houses you need in the year.
To be sure, so there the A boards, so A boards are typically regulated separately than a lot of other temporary signs. And I believe our code allows some provisions that are pretty clear about the design and quality and standards that be there. However, I will be the first to admit that is not really enforced consistently at this time. Partially because of just enforcement realities, just with with staff. However, that's one of the things, that's why we're not electing to make any changes to our sign policy at this time. Because how we address and regulate and enforce A boards. A boards is one of the things that we get complaints about all the time. About people don't want to see A boards on the street, they don't wanna see him in the commercial corridors, things like that. We also get a lot of questions about people like, hey, I wanna advertise my business, how can I draw people to my business? That's what makes it such a wicked problem, right? So the answer to this question though is that A boards do have their own separate regulations in place and they and it's a lot more technical in terms of how those are regulated. However, at this time, we are not making any changes to our sign policy or the way we're assessing fees for signs. Just because that is going to be a big kind of probably the most contentious part of the sign policy discussion next year is going to be around A's A boards.
Yeah, and just out of curiosity, what is that annual fee for a A board for realtor?
One hundred.
So the annual temporary is real estate signs, that includes the signs put in with a poster with sign on them. And it includes A boards, it's all real estate signs are included in a hundred dollar permit. That's a formidable question.
All except for if you did a like a leasing sign, you know, it's that would be not included, that's a in our temporary real estate signs, around the city for, you know, like open houses and that sort of thing.
Jennifer, unless you've got something you want to say, could you move your mic? We're getting a little bit of interruption from you.
Yeah, just one thing on the temporary signs, is there a time period that that fee is valid for? So if like you take it in and out at the beginning of of end of the day, does it have a, what is there a length of time associated with temporary signs? Or how frequently do you have to renew that?
Depends on the kind of temporary sign. So for instance, maybe you wanna put up a banner and the permit will last for how long the banner is up. There is a temporary sign, we call them post style signs, and those are allowed for businesses where they can have, you know, their business name. They can put it, you know, by the sidewalk outside their business, not on the sidewalk, but you know, near. And that would be a one time fee for that, as long as it's not changed.
So news and pictures next year.
Again, again, we're all the signs we didn't touch, it's just, yeah, we're waiting till our update.
So that answer your question?
Pretty much.
Okay. I guess the one follow up I would be is is if a realtor says, hey, I wanna put up an A board. Would it enter giving like arrow signs, hey, open house this way, that way for each A board? That would be twenty five dollars per A board unless you did the annual, in which case it's like, oh, here's a hundred and I would have spent that in a day.
We would just charge, like if you're doing one open house, just the one time for all the signs you would need. And you could put your permit up on all the signs.
Oh, there's a permit that's supposed to be displayed on the A board too?
Yes, although I I don't think that that's happened in recent years. Technically, it's in the code that that has to happen, but it's not been enforced, to my knowledge.
Temporary signs are supposed to have contact information for retrieval.
Yeah, yeah. Have any applications been made for A boards recently? Or they'll just go under the radar?
We mostly issue, we issue a couple annual ones to a couple companies. Typically, we don't get requests for just the one offs.
A weekend open house, okay.
Well, we'll be looking at a lot of things that sign update, like when should we require a permit at all for signs? What science should be allowed? What the fees should be, it'd be very comprehensive because there's our sign code will update. And we're not supposed to actually. Currently, we regulate regulate different types of. Well, I won't get into all, basically, it's a big update and a lot of things will change and we really want your input. So it's nice that you have some experience.
Well, actually.
So we can, you can.
Actually be inexperienced is like, oh my god, I'm out of compliance. Lovely, I haven't had a open house in Mill Creek per se this year.
But at least, at least you have experience like what what the industry, you know, expects on the cities would, you know, do. So bring some of that, some of that knowledge.
And if we're headed into that next year, it might be good to have some comparable information from our surrounding, just like we did on the other building permit stuff.
Absolutely.
And a follow up question as well. So if you get that annual fee, does it run from when you purchase the fee for one year or is it on a calendar year?
It's it's from the date of issuance, not a not the calendar year.
Okay, thank you. And commissioner, if you'd like, also, we're happy to connect with the offline too, and we can do an in depth discussion on.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
All right, so lastly, our planning fees. We have grouped all the different kinds of land use approvals into one of four processes. And then we fees for each process are billed at an hourly rate. And each process includes a minimum number of hours, so. And the deposit is equal to the the minimum hour. So let's say a process requires, we assume it's could take ten hours. You deposit for ten hours, as long as you our review times don't exceed that ten hours, you could just pay the base fee. If we'd spend much more time reviewing than we than a typical approval would for worse reasons, we can then bill the extra hours if necessary. So here is our posed minimum fees for these four processes. They range from seventeen fifty at the low end up to ten thousand for a very complex process. You can see it's very close to our peer average. For the type one, two, and three, it is much higher for type four, but we think our peers are undercharging significantly. Because these types of processes take a lot of staff time, a lot of council time, a lot of planning commission time. And the the fees our peers are charging doesn't adequately cover that. We're assuming about sixty hours for these types of approvals. Would you think about it, an annexation study or a rezone could easily blow through sixty hours. If you consume all the, all the time planning commission is meeting, all the commissioners, the staff, council meetings, reviews, courting with other agencies. We think it's appropriate to charge a a higher rate than our peers for that one.
So the hours, you count planning commission hours as part of that?
Well, at least the time the staff is at them.
Okay, the all the time the staff is at them, yeah.
And also, it's the matter of, you know, writing the staff report for planning commissions and.
Yeah, those planning commission support, not, yeah.
And yeah, I think fundamentally, process four, if, you know, if folks are asking us to change our rules. We think that that time of all the type of projects where we should probably get value time capture back. It's probably when they're asking us to change our rules for them.
Yeah, okay.
I got a question on this one too. And I think it might be similar as recently I was at a another city's sort of state of the city, and this was something that was brought up is it was a business within that city and they just wanted to relocate like two blocks down. And they had these fees that were an impact study, a traffic study, that type of stuff that made it such impractical that they're like, we can't move. And there's other cities that are rolling back these fees, are you aware of that?
I, without knowing the the context of what fees are being charged, it's a little hard to say. If we had a business in a city that wanted to just move locations. I can't imagine it would be that expensive. So let's say you're, you have to know what kind of what kind of business it was by chance?
Well, I think in this particular case, it was a, say chiropractic, you know, and they wanted to purchase and move into another building. Which gave them a more appealing. We'll just say for business and they were also thinking of, you know, doing expansion and adding on to their business and offering other services, more so in the like the restaurant industry. And, you know, between the fees to move locations, traffic flow, environmental study. It made it impractical for them to do so.
So in regards to that one, I would say, you know, one, what we're not changing right now is our impact studies or our impact fees or anything like that. That's another thing, it's probably gonna be part of our two thousand and twenty six work plan because there were traffic impacts fees. Setting those mitigations fees is a little bit more of an involved process and a much more significant study in terms of what those fees should be set at. But as it relates to other businesses and potentially rolling back development fees. Of the cities that we evaluated for this study, we did not identify any cities talking about reducing fees. In fact, what I found out is some of these cities are actually, they reached out to me like, oh, by the way, I hope we didn't use our fees because we're actually gonna be changing and upgrading, updating all of our fees. Just because as you can see by our current rates, we are substantially lower to the point to where we're hemorrhaging staff time and cost based on how low we're charging. But your point is well made about, you know, how we set our fees, it can't be prohibitively high and it can't be prohibitively lower. If you look at our price differential for almost most normal types of fees, we're within a four or five percent tolerance. I think some are plus, some are minus and across all of our fees. And across all of our fees that we do have that variation, we we tried to really, our goal was to try to be within ten percent of our peers on everything. Except for process four, in situations like that, again, I think what we're at least trying to get to is a. Point of cost recoverable and at least. Getting cost time, again, you know, I'm sensitive and I'm empathetic to the business owner that wants to relocate and is, you know. Concerned about the high cost of development fees, but at a certain point, you know, I think uh there is a. An also equal valid discussion about, is it the city's responsibility to subsidize? That relocation and for all the time analysis required to process that and all the environmental studies to have to happen. And a lot of these environmental studies and traffic impact studies are um not ways for cities to make a buck. But are often mandated by the state by RCW or are also in place to protect the public. For example, um you a traffic impact study, right, those are in place. To make sure that when a development happens that they're sufficiently planning for the increased strain on the transportation system and traffic. And believe me, I get an earful every time there's a traffic jam because of a new development, because we didn't study traffic sufficiently. And that study has to happen at some point, right, and so I think um. You know, and I think it's a great conversation, right, is why, why are these fees too high, are these too low? And why are they there at all, but a lot of times. These fees, at least for those studies and those impact studies are there as a way to protect the public because we have to study the impacts. Environmental is a perfect example of that, which will go into critical area regulation.
Oh, yeah, and and environmentally, I totally understand and support that, but from a small business perspective. Um, if Mill Creek gets into a situation where there's uh we want to encourage. Businesses to come in, which we've talked about as far as what do we want that plan to look like when we're expanding and we want to. Attract um businesses that can come in that are most likely unique. Um, and that could have an impact and um discourage potential businesses from moving in. And 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 the question is, is is there a process in place that you could petition to, you know, have some of these fees waived? That it might be beneficial to both the city uh as well as the business.
I do believe our code allows for some variation in fees when the time calls for it. However, again, I would also caution that um in the event that you are waiving fees or waiving development, things like that. Um, that there are very clear guidelines and standards on performance conditions for when. You should qualify for those kinds of public benefits or those kinds of those, because what we're talking about really are a lot of ways development incentives, right? There needs to be some kind of um. Guardrails in place to ensure that, you know, when those waivers are granted or standards are granted. They're done so consistently, because then you also run into potentially an issue, if you if you don't have those standards defined, then. You know, if we gave Steve a break on the development fees but not Bob. Then, you know, where's the fairness in that, and so I think that there's, you know, what you're talking about is valid and certainly. Um, as we develop the economic development framework, that's um something that typically wouldn't maybe. Be brought before the planning commission, but I'm happy because you're asking about it and I like talking about economic development, be happy to bring it back before y'all. Um, as we develop the economic plan. An incentives program or some kind of structure regarding development fees and waivers or things like that, I think would be appropriate especially. But I would just caution that any kind of things like that you would have. It necessitates, I think, some kind of guardrails to make sure that these incentives are given in a consistent and a fair way that also benefits the public.
In that case, wherever it was, I can imagine that the existing chiropractor's offices is here in an existing building, but if they want to buy. A half a city block and it's a, no, anything that's that's a vacant lot today. And they're going to put a building on it and generate traffic, that's. Just moving a business between, you know, already mitigated, yeah, it's it's tough though, I understand.
Yeah, uh uh in this particular instance, it was a building that had been vacant for ten years and it was to the city's advantage to. You know.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
And I just want to note that at least in Mill Creek, if you're moving a business from one existing building to another existing building. There's no land use fees associated, only if you needed to do um. Significant like structural work, the building, you may need to get a building permit to know to for the for ten improvement. We would not charge any fees just to move, the only fee would be land use wise would be if you're. Going to expand an existing building and that existing building is part of a the binding site plan. The binding site plan means it has a specific approval or the 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 location and size of the building. That can't be changed without modifying the binding site plan, so unless you're. Unless you're expanding a building that's already restricted by some of these binding plans, there'd be no fees associated. Um, unless you had a a ten improvement building permit that was required. So this is clarify, just a simple move is not gonna trigger any of these fees.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'm sorry, one uh question on the process for uh is that assumption, is there any change in the fee in? If city council doesn't approve a rezone proposal or anything like that? I I think back just into the the property across from uh sports arena, right, we went through, I I I lost track of how many rounds of. Different proposals on what they were trying to build at that location, right, it took a couple tries for them to. Get that land use zoning change. And so in in that case, would they be like out the that fee for each try or? How did that work?
We actually account for that in our next slide, um we have a type four request letter um on the second to last. So that is, you can um before you apply for your type four. Whatever like a rezone or a text zone code amendment, you send a letter to the city uh telling us what you want to do. And then we bring it to the planning commission and say. Is this is this reasonable, and if you say yes, we want to pursue it, then we charge the full fee, so we're gonna get some feedback from. Well, planning commission and city council before we charge the full fee, just so you know, we want to consider this, if we don't consider it, we're not gonna bill them. For all this time, if we're not gonna spend that time.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um, yeah, and the rest of the fees on here are um are. Actually updated to be um in line with our peers as well. Right, and no change to wireless communication facilities. And here is an interesting chart put together. So on this table, we show what are uh how mu- how many fees we collected. For the past five years. And how much the proposed fees um would have collected if they'd been in place. And then we also account for how much would have spent, how much that revenue would have gone to our third party consultants they built. And then the net revenue. Because the new fees would raise between fifty three and seventy percent based on the year. Yeah, so uh. We would anticipate next year, when these fees are in place, we'd probably raise about, you know. If it were for a similar twenty twenty four, about a hundred sixty thousand dollars in in new revenue.
And note that we do have a a chunk of um money that gets absorbed by Safe Bill every year. Um, Safe Bill, the city of Mill Creek does not have a building official or code enforcement, and we don't have any plans reviewers.
It's like eighty thousand dollars or something, I think, on one of those first charts.
They charge us about sixty percent of every plan review they take and then additionally every inspection. Um, they charge us about a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And if you recall, we charge a hundred dollars an hour to the customer, so um you do the math uh. It is a losing prospect when it comes to inspections, but with this new fee structure and stuff like that, we'll be. Um, above the one seventy, we'll be above that one, what Safe Bill charges, um but still. Um, that is something to also keep in note that because we don't have a building official, as we increase our fees. So too do we increase safe bills um bottom line.
Right, and yeah, so that that forty percent would come out of that third column, proposed fees. And then the second to last column, the net new revenue would be after we have paid off the additional safe bill, that's how much the city itself would would have would have received.
I I got a question, um I think it was what, on October first, they implemented new. Um, like ten percent uh taxes on services, does any of this? Fall into that realm, if you're familiar with that?
Oh, so this would be separate, so what council recently adopted was the property tax increase and the utility tax increase. Um, and those are were separate from everything that's going on with this specific issue. Those are separate issues to address the structural deficit and this is rather just trying to get to a cost recovery point with our.
Right, and I guess my point is, is that Safe Bill is somebody that we contract and they provide a service.
Yeah.
Correct, and my point is that on October first. Are they now, because they do a service, are they also going to be uh imposing a ten percent? Tax on their services and that will then be passed on to the city and we're just gonna be back where we started.
So I guess to clarify, when you say a ten percent tax on service, are you referring to the utility tax that's gonna be assessed on stuff like cell phones and cable bills? Different tax.
This and operating tax? It's retail services and your business and operating taxes that came into play, that if you do services, you have to. Charge your clients.
Is this a state level increase they're talking about?
Yeah, it's part of the state. Adopted in the legislature.
Okay.
So I guess that could reduce how much.
Yeah, net revenue.
So you might have to adjust your base accordingly.
Yeah, but again, the framework for our decision making here isn't necessarily to get at a um. We're not trying to plug any budget holes um with our fee increase, we're just trying to get to a more equitable state with our peers. And just try to get to a cost recovery point for staff time.
Right, yeah, yeah, as just said, yeah, our our goal isn't to. Increase the general revenue, like, you know, versus the city, it's just to cover how much costs to run the department. Alright, so next steps, uh we have this um. On December second, the city council will hold a public hearing on the fees. And they will go into effect January first.
Along with the new software.
Alright, any public comment?
I see nobody from the public here, um have you had any input from the public? I would have thought that we're gonna have a room full of the development community here tonight.
Yeah, surprisingly none, they may be waiting for the council meeting.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, because it's a pretty major imp, you know, yeah, pretty major impact to a lot of businesses, okay, good. So we're seeing nobody in the public here, nobody online, well, there is a lady's name, uh Mary Ann Baronjekin, is she? A member of the public or?
I believe she's from WDFW for the next public hearing.
Oh, okay, okay, good, okay, so then we see nobody making any input, we'll go ahead and close the public. Hearing portion of our hearing this evening and as. We said earlier, we're not here to make a decision or any recommendation, so we'll go ahead and move on to the. Public hearing on the twenty twenty five critical areas ordinance update.
Alright, thank you, and I just want to point out, we have um. Hmm, we have Alex from, Alex Ca- sorry, Capran, Capran, Capran from Facet, um he is the. Our lead contact um for Facet who worked with us on preparing the gap analysis, the best available science review. And the site potential tree height analysis, so if you have any technical questions, he's here to answer them because he knows more than I do.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, so first a bit of background. Um, so the Growth Management Act.
Let me put in the record, we have now opened our public, this is a public hearing, we're making our presentation for the public hearing.
Alright, so we're required by the Growth Management Act to protect critical areas, those critical areas include wetlands, fish and wildlife habitat areas. Critical, critical aquifer recharge areas, geologically hazardous areas and frequently flooded areas. Some of these critical areas require protected buffer, particularly wetlands, but also fish and wildlife areas. So critical area regulations, they help to preserve the natural environment, um preserve habitat and sources of fresh drinking water. They also encourage public safety by limiting development in areas that have natural hazards such as landslides or floods. And our critical area regulations are codified in chapter eighteen oh six. Another requirement of the Growth Management Act is that cities consider best available silence, best available science. When developing regulations. And rely primarily on guidance from the Department of Ecology, um Department of Fish and Wildlife. And the Department of Natural Resources. So why are we updating it now, uh as with the comprehensive plan that we updated uh last year. Uh, required to periodically review and update our regulations to ensure that um we're following best available science. And the deadline for um compliance is December thirty first, twenty twenty five. So here's a timeline for what we've done so far, uh in May, we hired Facet to assist us and they. Uh, over the coming months, they prepared, prepared a best available science review and gap analysis. After they give that to us, um we staff work to draft amendments to code. Um, we notified state agencies in October and received some comments from them, so far we've received comment from. Uh, fish and wildlife and um natural resources. And we are uh shooting for um. Adoption uh. Uh, December ninth, although maybe pushing that to the first January meeting just based on how things shaking out. So we may be at compliance for a couple days, but we talked to Commerce and they said, that's okay, during their first meeting, that'll that'll be fine. Yes. Alright, so. Yeah, so taste protection, I'm going to go over significant changes uh that were identified in the gap analysis, I won't go ev- over every single. Word change, um you know, maybe we're just updating a a reference to a new document or grammar fixes. Uh, the complete list of draft amendments uh was in the agenda packet staff report. Except that you'll find um on your seats, I have um a copy of the resolution. And I also have behind that um a few pages with some highlighted sections. Um, we met with fish and wildlife at a meeting yesterday and we. In response to that meeting, we did a couple slight changes to some definitions and um. The exempt activity section, and so I just wanted to highlight those, these changes were not in the staff report that was on online. In the agenda packet, they they just happened uh since yesterday afternoon, so. Um, but they're pretty minor and I think we can, I'll go over them to and to see if you approve of those changes. Alright, so um. One of the biggest changes, not so much changes as clarifications to how we do it, was for nonconforming. Uses in structures. Um, so a nonconforming use is when, or structure, is when um. Something was legally approved, but regulations have changed since that time, so it no longer meets current regulations. So for instance, imagine you built a home uh near a stream. And then the city adopted regulations that increase the stream buffer protections, so now your home is within that that protected area. You can continue doing what you're doing, you don't have to change what you're doing on for your home and your your yard. Um, you would only need to comply with um. Regulations if you were to, you know, like, for instance, like knock the home down, wait a year. And then it will no longer be considered um nonconforming, it's maintain the use, you can't. Abandon it and then come back and say, hey, we had this used a long time ago, that's to be continuous. So we want to update it to um improve clarity for when you're allowed to maintenance and alteration among conform uses and structures. We also want to clarify that you can um. Develop within the footprint of any existing impervious surfaces, so for instance, imagine uh. Uh, actually, City Hall here, City Hall was built before our particular regulations and. This building and the parking lot are all within the wetland buffer, so you can no longer build this building now. With current regulations, however, it's already here and we have clarified that anything that's an impervious surface previously developed. Can be redeveloped, so we could knock this building down and build a new one, or we could knock this building down. Or we could uh maybe um. we could like, just uh, let's start over, that you, we could uh, rebuild wherever there's impervious surface, so we could rebuild this building with a parking garage underneath. And, and that's fine, that's, that's allowed.
And that new building could cover the existing parking lot.
Exactly, yeah.
Because that's, okay. You can make four times as big a building as long as you have your parking underneath, you have an increasing impervious surface.
Anywhere that's a curb.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And paved can continue to be.
Question, uh, you talked about, oh, you knocked down a building and you waited here, is there that sort of restriction also on existing things like this?
Uh, yes, although um, so it has to be continuously used, so you couldn't like knock this building down with no plans to replace it ever, but if you had a permit, that's fine, as long as it's been permitted. Um, you can, you know, let's say you're, there's a, you got, you got your permit to replace the building. But uh, construction cross increase and delay, that's fine, as long as you have a permit or continuously use it.
Although please note that there is a one hundred and eighty day limit on permits. That they expire after a hundred and eighty days and you have to apply for an extension.
Correct. Um, although um, I think we, we'd, we'd go with, uh, yeah, I know.
Yeah, but I think that is a good point, though, I think where you're getting at here is like, right, the whole South Sub Area redevelopment. I can imagine it's gonna take more than a hundred and eighty days to go and build something new, or I don't wanna accidentally catch ourselves in a little bind that we inadvertently made.
Right, and then um, if the South Town Center redevelop, redevelop, um, any change is gonna require a binding site plan for the, for the property. And the binding site plans, they have a seven year expiration, so you'll have plenty of time to finish your, your project if you need it. And these changes are important because as we discovered, uh, we're doing this whole South Town Center sub area plan. Much of the South Town Center is in a critical, or is a protected area, so we want to make sure that we're not doing all this work or sub area planning for nothing if we can't redevelop, so. Anything as it is now can go up or, you know, or be changed in some way, you just can't encroach further than already exists. Um, another change was um, um, trails are currently an exempt, a creation of new trails is an exempt activity, meaning it doesn't have to, to follow the rest of the critical area regulations. But we have updated to require mitigation, so if you're going to create new trail area, you need to um, mitigate the impacts, typically trails have pretty small impacts, so mitigation is also gonna be small. Um, Commissioner Schulte had asked me offline for some examples, what that would look like. Um, I pulled, I found one. Uh, what, what park was it, it was a, it was a state park in Washington. They're adding, uh, this May, they got approval to add, to build a new trail. And their mitigation involved, A, avoidance, I mean, to keep the trail as far from the area as possible. And when it had to cross a wetland, a critical area, uh, it was built on, as a boardwalk on, on pin piles. And then for the other, for the areas that were not on pin piles. Uh, their mitigation involved replanting some disturbed areas with native vegetation. So nothing's gonna stop us from expanding North Creek Trail, we can still do it, we just need to make sure that we're not hurting this, uh, North Creek while we, while we do it. Alright, so we also had some changes to reasonable use exceptions.
Alright, go back on that previous slide on the trails for the, right for um, where do we keep lists of what are like, I can, we're looking through the notes about there's, you know, public and private trails. Uh, where do we keep? How does someone get to take credit for an existing trail, I think to the um, that natural area on Thirty Fifth Street, right, there's, I mean, there's a trail that everyone walks through that. It's how, how do, how do you get to claim credit that, yeah, this is a real trail existing? You know, if the city ever takes over it and we wanna do something more with it, that now we have to do this additional mitigation?
Yes, I mean, anything that was built before the regulations were in place um, can continue how, you know, how they were. For other trails, they're typically they would have required a permit of some kind, so we have a record of when they were permitted and allowed. We also have we have mapped most of the trails in the city, it's only for, let me clarify, it's only for like paved trails, like if you um, if you, well, I guess let me walk that back, I mean. So I guess your question is, is, are there trails out there we don't know about and um?
Well, I guess my, my, my question more generically is how do you know you're gonna get credit for like an existing trail versus it'd be considered a new trail, and like I said, my example was that Thirty Fifth one, I don't, I don't know if it's an existing officially.
In Penny Creek?
Yeah, that area, so I'm like, yeah, like, where's the list of, or I guess you said there is somewhere you have the list of what are the trails that we are considering existing?
Just make sure I'm understanding, the question is, like, obviously this is about new trails. But if there's existing trails that are not official, would us taking it over and improving them const, would that trigger the mitigation?
Yeah, that, that's kind of kind of my line thinking.
That's a, okay, that's a good question.
If we couldn't prove it was existing trail that was legally allowed, we might have to mitigate for it. However, there's I don't again, trails have pretty small impacts on critical area functions, so the mitigation to all usual is pretty small, we could replant areas, worst case scenario, we could buy mitigation bank credit to uh, to account for that.
Also make a note that um, the wetland uh, regulations that the city's proposing right now have a, a low intensity use and higher intensity use, so lower intensity includes trails and, and those like, so that have less buffer standards, less of an impact. Um, so that's also something that would, if it weren't legally established, yeah, could, could be addressed.
Alright, so you reasonably exceptions. This is when a property does not have enough unprotected area to reasonably use the property. So imagine you own a property and it's entirely covered by wetland. We can't say you can never use your property, we have to allow a reasonable use for it, that's based on state and federal uh, state federal law. So we have updated our regulations to be more clear about how this process happens, and we also define a specific amount of area that can be disturbed, so if you wanna build a single family home on your property that's covered in critical area buffer, you can do that using this process, and we have said you can use um, up to twenty five hundred square feet of um, area to build your house and your driveway and all the disturbed areas. Um, you can get more than twenty five hundred square feet if you submit a neighborhood land analysis that says based on surrounding uses, you need more space to, you know, be reasonable, so that, that would, but that applies to more commercial areas than um, like single family homes. So another change we've made is to mitigation monitoring, this is when you are, you have done some mitigation on your site, let's say you had to um, you had to alter a buffer, and so you're required to rehabilitate a different buffer area or um, basically whenever you, you have mitigated something that requires replanting, you have, we require a monitoring report every year to show that you didn't just abandon it and get, was overrun by brambles or you're not keep to, uh, taking care of it. Our current regulations required up to four reports the first year and to the second year. But best available science indicates you only need to one or two the first year and then one additional year, so we've reduced the number of monitor reports required. Alright, we've also made changes to wetland buffers. So when a, an applicant wants to develop a property where owns are present, they have to submit what's called a wetland delineation. The delineation um, is a, is a report that uh, shows the border of the wetland and also categorizes the wetland into one of four categories. And it also provides a habitat score for how much uh, function this, this wetland's providing for, for uh, as, as for, for habitat. And our wetland buffer widths are determined by the wetland category, the habitat score, the land use intensity, and whether mitigation measures are provided. So for instance, a, if you had a um, for, I guess, for instance, uh, North Creek has a lot of wetlands on it, they're typically category one wetlands, it's the highest category, they have a lot of value, so they have very wide buffers. Whereas on the DRCC properties the city owns, there's a couple of wetlands that um, were probably created by um, human activity disturbance, like they created depression and it's now kind of wetland, but they're small, they don't have a lot of habitat score, it was a category four, so they're just not very valuable, they don't provide a lot of function to the environment. So those have very small buffers or smaller buffers. So here are current buffer widths, you can see there's um, uh, it accounts for land use, it accounts for the category and the habitat score. And the buffers vary from a, a high of three hundred down to a low of twenty five feet. So Wetlands' most recent guidance um, recommends slightly modified buffer table system with adjusted buffer widths. Uh, the new system assumes a high or moderate impact land use because almost anything they can do in an urban area is high impact or moderate impact. A low impact would be something like uh, forestry or hiking trails or a cell tower, it can happen, it's just not common. Um, it also um, you also now need to provide a habitat corridor where applicable. So if you had two wetlands on site or one wetland on site and one wetland next to your site and they had a high habitat score, you have to connect them with a one hundred foot corridor so that wildlife can travel between these two high habitat areas. I guess it's not just wetlands, if you had any, any um, valuable habitat area would need to be connected. But I in, in practice, that's not going to be very common in an urban area because it, it's more relevant for rural areas where there's large properties that have um, high undisturbed habitats. It could happen in Mill Creek, it's just not likely. Would you say it's an accurate?
Yeah, yeah, it's really accurate.
Yep. Alright, so here's our updated table, you can see it's a little simpler, which is great for understanding. The, the um, the buffer widths vary from two hundred twenty five feet down to forty feet. But if you do not include impact minimization measures or habitat corridor, and you should have, you have a higher uh, width that varies from three hundred feet to fifty feet. Um, other changes include um, allowing a twenty five percent reduction in buffer width if you have a low impact land use. Um, we also are gonna acquire post-impact monitoring and demonstration of no net loss. Um, when you have a use in a, in a, in a buffer, in a lot of use in a buffer. Um, we've also more clearly defined a priority for mitigation methods, and there's a hierarchy that you have to follow, certain methods are more important ecologically, and so you had to prefer them over a, a lower importance um, method. Alright, so now on to the biggest change we've made. Currently uh, streams have repairing buffers around them. And those buffers vary from a hundred and fifty feet for North Creek and Tambar Creek to seventy five feet for other creeks. So you basically have the stream and then a buffer around it, that's this, this buffer area. And that's similar to what DNR has recommended in the past or the past, where you have a stream typing system that has buffers varied by the type of stream. For instance, fish bearing stream, non-fish bearing stream, shoreline of the state. Um, most streams in Mill Creek are type F fish bearing streams or potentially fish bearing streams, even if there's not currently any, any salmon in them. However, the latest um, WDFW guidance has emphasized a shift from repairing buffers to repairing management zones. So, which I'm gonna call RMZs, so RMZs are considered critical areas rather than buffers. And the width is dependent on site potential tree height. Site potential tree height is how high the dominant tree on a site would get um, in a, in a, in a mature forest, so we, we assume two hundred years for that. This is pretty new, a few cities have implemented it so far, although a number are currently um, and sort of unfortunately, WDFW did not provide model language to use like ecology did for the wetlands, although we did get some good comments from WDFW on our proposals. So they are proposing to use site potential tree height because um, the width of repairing ecosystems in forest areas is typically defined by the outer edge of the zone of influence, which is based on site potential tree height, so basically um, as high as the trees are growing, that's how much uh, area is necessary to protect the stream with a, a minimum of a hundred feet to account for pollution removal. Here's some, here's some maps uh, based on the WDFW data. Uh, if you look, most of our streams fall or many of the streams, for instance, Penny Creek are predominantly in areas that have a hundred ninety six feet of um, site potential tree height. Although there are some areas of Penny Creek by the natural area, up by one, uh, Thirty Fifth, that are, could go into one hundred and two feet. And most of North Creek is also a hundred and two feet. So how does this compare to what we currently have? So uh, site potential tree height in a city would be an average of a hundred and forty two feet with a minimum of a hundred and maximum nine, one ninety six. So current buffers are higher than site potential tree height for North Creek but lower for more, most other um, streams. So basically, the protected area around North Creek is gonna get a little smaller and the protected area around other streams in the city is gonna get bigger. However, another caveat is that North Creek has a lot of wetlands and wetlands typically have a wider uh, buffer, so it's not actually an impact in North Creek, it's, it's in, in, in fact. There's a table at the bottom of this uh, of this slide that shows stream length in miles where our current buffers are greater than the proposed and where our current buffers are less than. You can see the, our current regulations have a lower width for about two miles of streams in the city. And our current buffers have a um, sorry, our current buffers have a higher requirement for two miles and a lower requirement for eight miles. So uh, the proposed updates adopt repair management zones. And, and we will be using WDFW to determine site height. So we are preparing a um, a map based on WDFW data. And that will be the official width, so if you wanna develop your property, you can look at the city's website and say, you can look up your property and you can see what your uh, requirement would be based on the map. If you don't agree with that map, you also have the option of hiring your own um, uh, qualified consultant to prepare uh, a study to do their own studies, to think, you know, if you think our data is bad, you can get your own data and that's fine, you can do either method. So how was affected city?
Oh, Mary, or, actually, I mean, I'll wait till you do the fact.
Okay. So we expect minimal impact in North Creek because the wetland buffers are usually higher than stream buffers. We don't expect a lot of impact to existing developed properties because we have these non-conforming regulations, so if you have a house that's near a stream and now the, the, the RMD extends onto your property, that's okay, you, your house can stay, your yard can stay, keep doing what you're doing. Um, and you would be allowed a one-time expansion of up to one thousand square feet of um, disturbed area. And uh, about three quarters of the vacant parcels in the city and the MOOGA do not intersect any of these repairing buffers, so most vacant areas that are still developable uh, are not gonna be affected by this, this change. There are, there are some, um, but we think it's where we're concerned about especially South Town Center, it's not gonna be an impact, uh, not be an impact here. where we're concerned about especially South Town Center, it's not going to be an impact, uh, not being an impact here. And here's a map of those vacant parcels. You can see most of the vacant parcels in the city are actually, um, existing parks or open space in the MCCA or the, up by, on Thirty-Fifth where there's the Pinnacle Natural Area. So we don't think it's going to have a huge impact on, we don't, they won't have a massive impact on, on the city.
And also I just note that, you know, these regulations aren't just because, um, I'm going to break, I'm going to break the environmentalist heart. It's like, it's not just because we love the environment too. It's also, I think, an economic development issue too. If you look at a lot of Mill Creek's lifestyle, Mill Creek's brand, Mill Creek's aesthetics. A lot of what makes this city unique is we have so much act, we have, um, so much of this city is built around these beautiful wetlands and streams and these mature trees. And, um, I think protecting these areas is also something that really preserves our high quality of life that the city has secured for itself. And so, um, I would also just caution against, you know, it's not just about the environmental outcomes, but there is also, uh, uh, I, I believe a demonstratable impact on preserving what makes Mill Creek great. And, uh, point that out.
All right. So one of the last changes, um, we added a definition for hazard trees because we did not have one. And that has led to some confusion in the past about what kind of trees you can remove from critical areas and what qualifies as hazardous. So we add a definition. Now, uh, latest updates, this was not in the packet because this all happened since yesterday afternoon. But we met with WDFW yesterday, um, to talk to, go over the proposed amendments. In response to that meeting, we had a couple of small changes. And then, uh, this afternoon, a few hours ago, we got a, a letter from WDFW, uh, uh, a letter of support for the amendments. They, they think they're good and they want to support them. But here's what those changes were. In the definition section, we updated, um, functionally disconnected buffer to be functionally disconnected area. And here's why. So, uh, if you have a, for instance, a wetland buffer and there is a road that cuts through the buffer, anything on the other side of the road is no longer part of the buffer because it's functionally disconnected from the wetland. The, the, the road blocks any, any wetland function or value that's being provided by the buffer. So, um, imagine you have a wetland, a wetland buffer here, and you have a road that, and then more buffer here. This buffer that's disconnected is no longer buffer. Uh, it's disconnected. And we have updated it to be area because we want to apply it to RMZs as well. If you have a, or a very management zone that's by a stream and it's cut off from the stream by a road, you no longer, in the cutoff area, no longer is a critical area because it's not providing any value to the stream anymore. So we modified the definition to apply to both buffers and RMZs. Um, the other change is to exempt activities. And we now explicitly require no net loss of function and value, to a critical area as a result of exempt activity. We don't think this can have a big impact because the only exempt activities that are likely to result in net loss of function and value already required mitigation, and that's trails. So, um, we had as language, uh, just to clarify that you can't, you know, none of these exempt activities are allowed to destroy a critical area and not fix it. You have to make sure that whatever you have broken, if you have broken anything, must be restored. All right. So next steps, um, uh, we have final adoption. Most likely the first council meeting in January. Yeah. And now public comment, if any.
Okay. So we'd like to open it for any public comment. And we have nobody on the line that wants to make a public comment that I can, I'm aware of. And there's no members of the public in our meeting room today. So are there any, uh, any additional questions or comments by the planning commission?
In the amendment paper that you gave us in person, that, that new section about subdivision, um, this, because it's page twenty-four sixty-seven.
Yes.
Item one, land that is located wholly within a critical area buffer may not be subdivided. I mean, you just said, for example, this whole area is under the buffer area. I guess the, the other section, other portions of the code that talk about, um, areas that are currently, um, already used for, as an impervious surface, that kind of overrules this portion, right? Like if this area gets redeveloped, it obviously would get subdivided in some way. So I'm assuming that other regulation overrides this one, this, this part of the code?
Yeah. So let me just pull that up real.
Does that make sense, my question?
I think the intent of the code, if I'm following you, would be more for vacant lands. So if you have a vacant land that's fully encumbered, that's where that kind of reasonable use exemption criteria would come into play. Where you would get a building envelope. As, as Justin mentions, that twenty-five hundred square feet to establish all improvements and the maintenance area around your house or, or business. But that's, yeah, really, I think is where the intent of that.
So just because you bought that piece of swampland, you might be able to build something on it.
Yeah, per state and federal law, constitutional law. Yeah, yeah.
Can't take all your property value away. So did that take care of? Well, like I said, I said, I just want to make sure, like, so payment conservative, we don't, like, like that it does, the other portion of the code does overrule this portion where it's, if, like I said, my specifically thinking this area where we said it's like earlier, the position she said, this is all in the buffer zone. Here we're saying that something is in the buffer zone. It can't be subdivided. Just make sure that we've written our code correctly to not, uh, put ourselves in a bad situation.
Yeah, great question. Um.
And you know, you know, maybe if you don't find the answer right now, that's fine. I've just something to look afterwards. It, it probably would, you, you probably look at a couple of different spots to work through that.
Yeah, that's great feedback. We'll definitely re-review and just apply an extra lens of analysis and critical review on the specific.
Yeah, especially like that. I know what your intent is, but I just want, like, I've dealt with other situations outside of this where,
Right.
what we wrote down, this is what ended up happening.
Right. The unanticipated consequences.
Yeah. So the non, the non-conforming, yeah, I think we should add a line just to clarify that non-conforming uses can be subdivided. Yeah, like, like here, if we wanted to redevelop this part, this, the city hall, but dividing the two different properties to sell to two different people, you could still do that. I think that's a good, a good, um, a good amendment.
Okay. So seeing no other indication of comments by the planning commission, we will go ahead and close the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five critical area ordinance update. And I want to thank the staff for such excellent presentations. You put a unbelievable amount of work into this. Was a huge amount of work for us to read it. And also our consultant who's here with us this evening did a very good job. Okay? So I think that takes care of our public hearings. And so we'll go on into unfinished business. And we say none here. Does anybody want to bring up any unfinished business? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. So we're under new business. Then we have a resolution to approve amendments to the Mill Creek's critical area ordinance. And this would be a recommendation we'll be sending to the council, correct? Like all of our recommendations, okay?
I don't have a slide with the motion, but the, if you, to make a motion, if you just want a motion to approve using the, the headline of the, the resolution, the top there.
Okay. So a resolution recommending, uh, we recommend approval of Mill Creek's critical area ordinance, which is item E under new business on our agenda here. So could we have a motion as such to do that if we agree?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, planning commission resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one eighty-two. As, as written and shown by the staff today.
Okay. So is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded for, to, uh, move ahead with planning commission resolution number twenty-five, two twenty-twenty-five dash one eighty-two. Is there any discussion on the motion? So seeing nobody wants.
Do we have to amend it for what we were just talking about, uh, about the subdivisions?
I would recommend so. That way, when I put it into council, I can say this is the actual draft that planning commission recommended.
So that would be an amendment. So we'd have to have a second action for that and have an amended emotion. So you want to make a?
Can you just, can we recommend it with the recommendation you made with adding a delay? So otherwise we'd have to come back, right?
Yeah, yeah. So if you just want to make a motion to amend the, um, um, amend the amendments to include.
The recommendation you made to adding the line for clarification of, yeah. Otherwise we'd have to come back just for that, right? Yeah. So.
So that's forward as an amendment. So we'd want to discuss and vote on the amendment. And then we'd have an amended main motion to vote on. Okay. I didn't read my Robert's Rules of Order before I came tonight. So.
A copy if you like.
Hate it when you do that. Okay. So we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Yeah. So any, any discussion on it? Say those, those in favor of our amendment to our main motion, signify by, signify by saying aye. Okay. So we have an amended main motion now. And so those in favor of our planning commission resolution twenty-twenty-five dash one eighty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye. As amended.
As amended. Yes. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay. Okay. So we're done with the new business. And do we have anything for a study session this evening? Okay. And then do we have anything for the good of the order?
Yes, I do.
You want to pull the mic over?
I always have something for the good of the order.
I'm sure you do.
So just a quick couple of updates on some exciting ongoings, uh, in planning world in Mill Creek. One, as I alluded before, uh, we have the new permit software that's rolling out. We're going to be going live with code enforcement modules on that soon, um, which is exciting because we'll have a modern code enforcement system. And, um, we'll actually be able to track code enforcement by address now. It's bizarre that we haven't, that that's not something we have now, but here we are. We're fixing it. We're moving forward. So the, also we'll be bringing forward, uh, a tree permits as well. So the public, public will be able to use the new software to remove trees and stuff like that. And that'll give staff some much-needed practice with the new software and stuff like that. And then, um, January first, we'll go, go live date with the other software permits. One thing I'm just going to be cautioning everyone on is anytime you transition to a new permitting software, there is always a brief period of chaos, um, where things will break. Maybe systems weren't flowing like we originally intended and we're going to have to fix stuff on the fly. And so I'll just be asking the, uh, members of the public for patience as we, um, go through that process. It's normal. It's natural. We're going to try to mitigate as much as we can, but, you know, can't make promises for, um, whenever these things happen. The second thing I would like to let everyone know is we are, um, progressing well through the, uh, South Town Center project. As you recall, we hadn't, we hadn't intended to do a, uh, special meeting with all, everyone again. But we just didn't have enough material and we didn't, we wanted to make sure that when we bring everyone together, we're bringing the goods and we have something that we really have good insightful questions to ask y'all. We have answers that we want to receive and, uh, we have something to present. So we can probably look for that meeting to happen probably in January. Um, and where we'll be able to see some initial massing models and see some of the initial design decisions that were made. And inspired primarily from the conversation that we had as part of that group workshop. The third thing, and, um, for people who have been, um, in the Mill Creek area for a while are going to hopefully celebrate at the news. We are rapidly, we are wrapping up our interview process for the DRCC redevelopment. And we'll be notifying the preferred candidate, um, pretty soon. And then we'll hopefully enter negotiations. And, um, if all negotiations go right, we can get that contract done quickly. We'll be starting that process next year, early next year. This is exciting because it's been a much delayed project, um, but we're finally making progress and we're moving it forward.
So i- is that a similar process to what's been used for South Town Center? Piece of property getting proposals and?
Yeah. So we use, we issued an RFQ, um, and I don't know if it's a byproduct of the recession or if it's just a really exciting opportunity, but we got way more applications than, uh, normal. So we got, uh, eight applications and from, um, qualified, uh, consultants, we interviewed three. They were outstanding candidates. I'm really excited by the quality that we reviewed and interviewed. And, um, so, yeah, we'll be moving forward with that. The process moving forward throughout the year, um, it's probably going to be similar to South Town Center where we're going to be, um, looking to work with obviously planning commission and probably our friends in design review board, arts beautification and Parks and Rec, just because of the community cross. You know, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of function, there's a lot of crossover between all these different volunteer organizations. And we'll also be, um, I'm hoping to be a robust community outreach effort. And so, um, you know, stay tuned and we're very excited for forward momentum on this. And hopefully we, um, we can have a master plan for the DRCC and South Town Center approved by next year.
And one more question on the permitting software. Are any of our neighboring municipalities using this package by chance?
Um, for OpenGov specifically, no. There are other cities in Washington that have it.
Okay.
But we are, um, we stand alone, I believe in Snohomish County for using the software.
Okay.
But, um, that's all right because I think we, uh, we have a better product than everyone else.
Yeah. We're Mill Creek, so.
Exactly.
We can do it better. Okay, good.
Yes.
And so with that, I'd like a motion for any other business. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
I motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded for adjourn the meeting this evening. Uh, any discussion? Okay. Those in favor by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, now it's a decision. So we are adjourned at, looks like about seven twenty-eight. Good. Okay.